All right, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call a meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You roll call. Everybody's present. All business. Item number one is approval of minutes. The regular meeting minutes of June 6, 2024 were provided for review. I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of 6 June 2024 as presented.
Don't move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Call and roll.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemens?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
What's your name?
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passed. Audience participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Nope. Okay. New business. Item number two is an update on Independence Day celebration, which we'll be having on June 29, 2024. Josh can give us an update?
I am, and I'm gonna be a little bit weird and just hold my mic. I want to stand tonight. So, we are about eight days out from the Independence Day celebration. As you all know, it's at the high school this year. The high school has been very helpful in, or the school district has been very helpful in helping us prep for this. And so, it's gonna start at about 3:00 PM on Saturday for the public, open to the public. We're gonna be there, staff is gonna be there about 9:00, helping to set up. Vendors should start arriving about 10:00, 11:00 timeframe and should be prepped and ready to roll there by the time the gates open on, at 3:00. Brief overview, let's see, we've got, does this work? It does. We've got a bus route, so if, when people ask you, we do have a shuttle service running from the intermediate and elementary schools. So, everything is this side of K7 this year, okay? Elementary and intermediate schools. We will be busing them from there. This is the blue line. They'll run down, drop off here, and go on back. And they'll probably be on about every 30 minutes rotation, maybe a little bit quicker when people start showing up. We've got public parking on site. We have approximately 400 spots open for the public. We've got vendor and employee slash volunteer parking and VIP parking up here in the corner. But these lots here, 1, 2, 3, and 4, will be open for the public in some variation. We'll have ADA parking closest to the site of the rides and the concert down here on the south side. So, we're gonna have about nine vendors, food vendors, food truck vendors, about the same as we did last year. And then we're gonna have the same ride company we've used for a bunch of years now, providing the rides. We've got Morse area this year for more rides, which will be nice. And then we're gonna have the concert here immediately south of the high school. The stage is going to be budding up against the high school building and facing south. But then, when the fireworks do go off, we will ask our attendees to turn around. And I'll view the fireworks being shot off of the hill. And then there will be some boxes down here on the sidewalk here. So, all of this area south of the access road is going to be closed off for the public, as is most of the area of the high school. So, anything not essentially asphalt will not be available to the public. So, we have our, the local DJs, and now, of course, their name is escaping me, but they-
Nick and Tammy.
Nick and Tammy, thank you, Tim. Nick and Tammy are Lansing Knights. They will be doing the pre-show from 3:00 until about 6:00. And then, 6:30, I believe, Sass Monkey, which is a four-piece rock band, will be taking the stage. Fireworks should go off about 9:30. It'll be a 20-minute show, so we should be wrapped up somewhere around 10:00. And we will, we will go from there. So, questions, comments, concerns?
When they come out, are they gonna be able to turn north and south?
They will. And at last conversations with police, we are going to have, hopefully, an officer at both 4-H and McIntyre. And we are going to use the light signal here as normal. And then, but out at the four ways, we're just, we're gonna let the police officers just say, "Go on through," and stop the, stop the east-west traffic.
The one coming out of the high school, you're gonna leave that as normal?
Yeah, I believe so. Yep.
I really, I really like where you have your food trucks.
Yeah.
That's ideal.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Seems incredibly well organized.
I appreciate that. We've worked very hard on that. So, Denise has done a good job getting the vendors in. And we're, it's gonna be a good, good celebration, so.
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
They figured out a way to turn off the parking lot lights?
Uh, yeah.
There was a time there was, it was like nobody knew how to turn the lights off.
We have, we have verified that, but that'll be something we can follow up with, with the school district on getting those.
It did come up at one point.
Yeah, so, the plan is, the plan is to cut all the lights. We will be providing a few lights here and there, but not nearly as many as we've had in the years past because of the lighting already on site, so.
There would never be a need to turn them off. I mean, unless you have something-
Well, I think there was this concern of having too many lights on affecting the-
Oh, yeah, it will affect it. All I'm saying is there-
Other than this, yeah.
No reason to shut the lights off unless you-
No, not for the whole thing. It was just for the show.
Yep.
Because that meeting at the school board, the guy said, "I don't know how to-" Go on, time.
Right, so, well, we will follow up with them and make sure that we can, we can get those off, so.
I don't know if they all, but enough of the light that affects-
Yeah, we've already talked about the lights on the buildings themselves. In my mind, that was also discussing the lights in the parking lot, but maybe that's, that's not the case.
It's the lights on the, on the tennis court. That's, that's the lights. All it takes is someone to walk right there where you see employer-vendor parking-
Yeah.
On the side of the building there, and there's two gray buttons. You just walk up and push the buttons, because it's open for public, and the lights come on and there's no turning them off.
Okay.
They're on for 30 minutes to an hour, and I mean, they will light up the world.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, we can, we can talk-
They can just coordinate with their engineer and maybe he finds a way to disconnect them for that night.
Yeah, we, we-
People play tennis when they're doing groundwork.
The guy that just, they just hired him.
Yeah.
He did not know, probably worked for lights also. It's not like they're not on the ball.
Yeah, no, Doug seems to be getting up to speed. We're also working with Kevin. They've been, they've been good to work with, so.
Yeah, he's great.
Do you plan on blocking off parking on the residential streets like Ridge Drive?
We may have some signs posted there.
I can see people parking there just so they don't get caught up in traffic inside. And the neighbors that live in the ridge probably are not gonna like that. I'm just, I'm just saying.
I understand, I understand. Yep, yep, makes sense.
I'd do it if I could.
You can park in the ridge on the curb and walk in, and then you walk out, get in your car, drive away, because you're not caught up in the congestion inside the parking lot.
It's street parking, is that what you're talking about?
If they park in, on Ridge Drive, along the curve in the residential area, you walk in, when it's over, you walk out, you get in your car and you drive away. You're not caught up in the traffic going into the parking lot.
I don't know what you do about that. That's public parking.
You put up no temporary parking. They do it all the time. Right, Steve?
So bad.
We, we also did that at Town Center last year and-
Right. Didn't work. Right, it didn't work. Right. I inspired it up, okay?
I, no, and it's, it's something that we, we have considered. We will put a couple of signs there at the entrance and then-
Because I'm sure some residents will park on the curb.
Potentially.
It's gonna be a lot of fun.
It will be, it will be.
That's pretty cool. I mean, that's, that's pretty cool. I mean, the fact that you can get the traffic sitting around and parking and buses are in and out. I mean, that's, that's a great job.
Yep.
Great job.
Are we gonna have a booth there, city tent or anything like that?
We normally do, yeah.
Yeah, we will have a city tent where, where staff and what are there. What are you referring to in particular?
Will people come talk to us, the representative?
Yes, we, we will have a tent available. I think we are actually, the command, command tent's gonna be right here, this yellow dot here. So, that'll be something that, that will be available, yes.
You can come out, hang out with me, Dan.
Hopefully, the weather works out.
What's the deal, Brian?
In the dunk tank.
I'm, I'm trying not to pay attention to the weather forecast right now, so.
Hopefully, the weather works out. It's gonna be fun. It's gonna be fun.
Are there any other questions for Josh?
I have a question. I have a question.
Let's not talk about that.
We don't know.
Hi, just, what are the expectations for board members? Do you want us to be there to help set up, clean up?
Absolutely not. If, if you would like to, we've, you, you can volunteer. We will be glad to, to use your, your, your back and moving things around. But feel free to show up. You guys will have spots reserved up, well, not reserved, but you will have parking passes for the, in the vendor and employee parking. So, you'll be able to get in even when the, I expect the parking to fill up pretty quickly. So, you guys will have spots available. Please don't abuse that, just, you know, yourself and the one car. Load that car, car up. But yeah, come and enjoy is really what we want you to do. Yeah, just, the event starts at 3:00. Most people start getting there probably between 4:30 and 5:00. But the food trucks are good, the music is good, and it's a great experience. It's a great atmosphere.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thanks, Josh.
Cool.
Appreciate it.
One more question.
Okay.
How many sponsors do we have for the fireworks display? Do you know?
We have seven or eight. We've got GBA and Lina Weaver. I should not try to-
Green and Meyer.
Green and Meyer. I should not try to read them all off. They're all, all on a sign. They will be, there will be signage thanking them for their, their sponsorship. So, Denise has done a very good job of getting sponsors kind of out of the blue. Like, it's, it's been, it's been good. It's helping to defer costs and then also providing some more community engagement, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thanks, Josh. Item number three is building permit process overview, which I believe Josh is also giving, so we'll give him a break.
I'm actually gonna sit down now because I've got my computer and I've got, I've got stuff on this. So, I just wanted to walk through the building permit process real quick with you guys. It's pretty simple, pretty self-explanatory. What it, what it involves is somebody with the desire to build something in Lansing. So, they put together an application, which you can find online. They submit it to us. We review for completeness. So, we need to make sure that there are plans provided. And if the plans are for something that needs an engineer stamp, that they are stamped by the engineer, that type of thing. Site plan showing where this is gonna be on their property. We accept everything from a, you know, technically drawn site plan to somebody with a, you know, piece of paper and a Sharpie. You know, we're, we're pretty open and flexible with that. Obviously, there's a lot of different types of permits. Once we get into like house permits, then we get a little bit more, more technical with that type of stuff. But we'll, we'll accept a lot all across the, the range of the spectrum there. So, once it's complete, we, we will review it. It can take up to approximately two weeks, maybe a little bit longer. But most of the time, it's much shorter than that. Dan is really good about getting those reviews done quickly. We do contract with a third party called IBTS that provides building plan review and building inspection services to us. So that when either Dan is out of the office or it is something that is, Dan needs support on for the review, they can provide that because they, they work on commercial and industrial-grade buildings all the time. In fact, they, this company is the building, at least some of the building inspectors for the DeSoto Panasonic battery plant. So, that's the level of service that they can provide and that we get when it comes to review. Once the application, or if the application is after the review approved, or not approved, I should say, we send it back, say, "Hey, we have these comments. We need these revisions made." The applicant has a chance to respond to them, and sometimes we listen to those comments or those responses. Other times, we say, "No, we still need them changed," and they make the changes. And then we review it again. If it, then it's approved, it moves on, and we make sure that everything, all the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed. We notify them of the approval. Then they make their payments. Then they receive the building permit. And at that point, they can go ahead and start building. And at that point, we start doing inspections. Some of you have had our building inspectors come out for various projects. But they, they'll come out, they'll review, depending on the scope of the project, four, five, six, seven different things over the course of different, different times. If it is something like a home, then we start, or a business, we start talking about a temporary occupancy permit, or TCO, certificate of occup- temporary certificate of occupancy, which is essentially, hey, everything is good to go. There's a couple of minor things that need to happen, but you're good to go. Go ahead and open up or move in, right? But there's still things that we need to provide. We need to see it happen. For instance, house numbers, right? Some people might get the house up, ready to roll, everything's good, but the house numbers aren't off. Technically, by code, not technically, by code, you need to have numbers on your house or your place of business. We can issue a TCO saying, "Hey, you're good to go, but get these numbers up." And then we do the final, we'll give them a certificate of occupancy, and then they're good to go, and then we're done. And that's the building-
Who do they go to, the builder or the owner?
Which with a certificate of occupancy?
Yeah.
Depends on the situation. Sometimes the builder, sometimes, it depends on who's owning, who owns the house at that point. Essentially, it's the, it's the, typically, it's the owner, the property owner.
I know we got a temporary deal because there was a couple of minor little things-
Right.
Which were taken care of, but I don't recall ever getting that.
I would think it would be the person on the permit with their email address, right?
It can be. It's, it, it depends on how they, they structure, you structure the, the buying process. A lot of times, most of the time, it's the contractor, and then they pass it off to the, the property owner. But we can give it to the, the person who's buying the house as well, so. Permits are good for 180 days. We can extend them. I've checked with Dan and Melissa. They are not aware of any time that we have denied an extension. If somebody's come back and said, "Hey, it's taking me longer to get it done," then they, they move, they keep going. I wanted to stop-
I wanna pull it right there.
Can we? Okay, I know you do.
So, they get a permit that's good for six months?
Yep.
And they don't get done?
Yep.
Then they gotta come back, if they're gonna stay legal, they gotta come back and get a extension or a new permit or whatever. Do they get charged for that?
Yep.
So, they're-
Yep, there is, there is a fee associated with an extension.
Okay. The same, the same as the original fee or just an extension fee?
That is a good question. Let me look at my fee schedule. I think it is a lesser charge. Let me look at that. That is not actually delineated here, so I would assume that it would be something similar to the, to the initial, so.
Okay, so, whenever you're ready.
I am.
So, in theory, you know, I've had this conversation before because I know it's happened many years ago. But when you get a house that's basically being remodeled inside, outside, the whole nine yards.
Yep.
And, and then they don't follow through, they don't get it done in six months for whatever reason. They get an extension and they don't get it done, and then the neighbors start to complain.
Yep.
And I am told, was told at the time, as long as there's a valid permit, there isn't anything we can do about it. I can take it, I won't, I can show you the house-
Right.
And this, but that's, this kind of stuff can't go on for years. And I see another one that I think is heading that away.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know what the answer is, other than I get tired of hearing from the neighbors about, "What are we doing about blah, blah, blah?"
Right.
So.
Yeah, no, I, I, I understand. And at a certain, with one of those houses that we're talking about, we, contact with the owner is difficult at best. I know Dan has tried to stop by and, and figure out what they're doing.
They're not doing anything. I can tell you what they're doing.
Right. So, we, there are, there's one that we are, we are in process.
Do they have a valid permit on, on file right now?
Right now, I believe that they're, unless they came in through an extension, I, I did not see the extension. They're probably-
So, they don't, they don't even have a permit to do anything on the building anyway? So, why would they be working on a building?
Well, if you, why would they? Well, if it's rental property, I would assume you'd wanna get it up and going.
Well, that's, but that's a personal decision, right? Like, if I don't wanna do anything on it, I don't have to do anything on it.
No, you don't.
By city code, right? I gotta take-
Depends on, it depends, it depends on the, the state of the, the building.
Right, no, I mean, I have to maintain it. What I'm saying is, but if I pull my permit and say, "I ain't got the money, I'm just not gonna do it."
And I don't care from what you're talking about. I don't care what it looks like on the inside. I couldn't care less what it looks like on the inside. I'm concerned about when it looks like the state it's in now, which is, and they turned it into a dump.
That's a different issue than a permit.
Yeah, I, I, I get Gene's frustration on this. He's, he's shown me that and-
Oh, yeah, I've seen it.
Yeah.
Yep.
I would be frustrated too.
I'm just trying to split it between what's a permit issue and, you know, what's a code violation on the property.
Right, and, and, and there's a, there's a significant overlap once you get into a situation like this. So, it's trying to figure out what, what's going, what the property owner is doing or not doing and, and how we perceive there, so.
Again, I don't care what goes on behind the walls. I really don't. But you've seen it. I won't get into that. But other than to say, the neighbors who have dealt with it for a number of years, retarded. I mean, the lady that lives next door is 80-some years old. She gets out, keeps her stuff up.
There's no, and there's nobody living in this place either.
I don't, I'm not aware of anybody, but-
No, is the answer.
I mean, it's vacant, so.
Well, I, and this, this may be unique, award one, and I suspect it probably is. But this, there's gotta be a, there's gotta be a happy medium somewhere, and, and I don't see it happening. And it's gone on long, you know? And if, and if part of the issue is getting ahold of the owner, then I, you know, we gotta, I understand, he's not the only guy that plays hard to get. We've got people with code violations that know it and don't want to be found. Because if you don't serve them, they haven't done anything wrong. I don't know what the answer is. This stuff that sits there for years, death's got to change, period, whatever it takes. I don't care what it looks like on the inside. Do whatever you want. But I'm tired of boarded-up windows. I'm tired of half, half of its siding is up and half's not. And I got my doubts how far that'd go on the other side of the street. I'm just gonna say it. I've said it before, and I've been told that's not right, but I, I don't necessarily agree with that. So, that's all I got. Something's gotta be done.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, at, at a minimum, just get back to Gene with what the options are. I mean, I, we can send him a letter. Like, if it's a vacant building and they're not taking care of it, I mean, it could be abandoned, you know? I mean, what, pretty much.
Okay, yeah.
We could, we could clean it up ourselves and bill it to his, put a lien on his house. There's things that we should be able to do legally.
Well, there, there are.
We would have to walk through the, the civil process for that.
Because we had another house on Eisenhower that was like that four years, four years.
There's gotta be-
And, and as long as it had electricity and water, it was considered inhabitable. And, and again, once they got inside, which they eventually did, there wasn't nothing inhabitable about that place at all.
Right.
But the issue there again was the neglect on the outside, trees growing up through the garage, plywood nailed on the side, so. And that, and that, that went for years. And this other one I'm referring to is, is now into the year stage. And those are just the ones I know about.
Right.
I mean, we had something on the other side of the road, similar, the guy building his basement there had his fence torn down, all this stuff there. That, that took forever, had a lot of complaints about it.
Yeah. Well, I just, you know, at some point-
I mean, there's, yeah, I mean, but somebody's living in the house, so it's a little easier to get ahold of that person and tell them, "Hey, you need to get your stuff cleaned up," so.
Yep.
Well, at some point, if they're, if it's obvious they're not gonna do anything, then we've gotta be able to do something.
I mean, have we tried registered mail, like, to get ahold of the person?
I believe so.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I mean, I don't-
That'll be something we, we, we work on over the next couple of weeks. It'll, it's not gonna be a, it's not gonna be a, a short process, the, getting the abatements and whatnot. It's not a short process. So, on a more positive note, I wanted to kind of end with where we're at, what we did last year in terms of building permits, and then what we are doing this year. We have 571 total permits, but in 2023, 47% of them, a whopping 268, were roofing permits. So, the rest of them came in at something around the 4% or 5% range. And then, if you can go to the next slide, Ken. This year, we've got 21% roofing permits, or roofing permits, and we have about 200, actually, 200 exactly currently. Year-to-date, 17%, 17% are fence permits, that brings up to 34. And then the remaining 72% are various other permits. So, that's what we're doing. That means a lot of inspections. Dan, this is the busy season. Dan is up and down, in and out all the time. And that's what we're doing. So, that's all I got.
I just dealt with the process. I think the process is awesome. Dan took pictures, and when, when he approved something, he would send me an email saying it was approved with pictures that he took.
Yep.
And as we went through the process of me building my deck, I would, I says, "Dan." He'd say, "I'll show up." He showed up. He sent me an email. I knew it was approved, and we went on our way.
No, I, I just recently used him for the same thing, Ken, and it was, you know, when Dale rode out or whatever he was gonna do, and it, and it got approved, and they got it done, and Dale called and he came out. And Dale would take pictures along the way, additional pictures, and send them to Dan. And Dan said, "Yeah, I'll just send them to me and I'll keep with the, with the files."
Yep.
I think the process is great for the rule followers. The process is horrible for those who are the rule breakers. And it's hard to make the rule breakers follow the rules when you can't get ahold of them and you can't hold them accountable.
Well, it, and I get, this gets my goat a lot. And, and this isn't the first time you and I, or I and Tim, or Rob, Greg, years ago. Just nothing new about this. I'm not upset with you or your staff. I mean, you guys do great. Dan does a great job, and I get all that. It's these other things that somehow fall through the cracks and then sit there and get worse. I mean, the house on Eisenhower, we finally got him to mow the grass, finally. And then a storm would come in and a branch would break off a tree. So, you know what he did? He mowed around the branch.
The example you're giving is like 10 years old.
I know.
That house was demolished before I came.
I know.
So, I just, I just wanna clarify, because you're making it sound like the, the issue that's happening is recent. That house was torn down before I came here. So, the example you're giving is 10 years old. I just wanna clarify that.
I have said more than once, this predates him. What I don't wanna see is us going back that way again. That's all.
Yep.
Because you don't, you don't hear what I hear. When I moved in, everybody knew I was- was on the city council. Oh, good. We got a councilman on the block now. So, I just want to make clear, I'm not, I'm not upset with anybody here, anybody who wasn't here. There's got to be something that can get done. I don't mean to offend anybody, but I've seen too much. It's, thanks for your, all the stuff you sent me today, I didn't know what I was looking at, but thank you anyway. Okay, I'm done.
Anybody got anything else on the permits? Okay.
Well, let's move on.
Yeah, that stuff. All right, reports, any department heads. Besides Josh, city attorney?
Nothing reported.
Tim?
Nothing.
Tim's got nothing. Go around the horn.
Really? Wow.
Gene's first.
You got nothing out of me, I'm done. I've said my piece. Thanks, everybody.
All right, thanks, Gene. Marcus?
Hey, great job on, on the Independence Day celebration, Josh. Pretty excited about it. Next Saturday.
Next Saturday.
Yeah, next Saturday. Looks good. That's all I got, Mayor. Thank you.
Jesse?
Thank you to all of our hardworking employees. You know, I know they're going to work hard on the Fourth of July festival, and be out there in the hot sun, and working on their day off, so I really appreciate everything that they're doing. Thank you.
Thanks, Jesse. Pete?
I had a neighbor come to me and ask about political signs. When are those authorized to go out?
It's a favorite, favorite question amongst the entire city.
Forty-five days.
Tim sent out it.
Forty-five days.
I, I think a few of them went up a few days before forty-five days, but we didn't, we didn't go out and pull them if they were one or two days early.
Just, just that my math is correct. Are we in forty-five days now? Are they authorized to be out there?
I think Saturday is forty-five days.
Is this coming Saturday?
Okay. The 22nd, I think, yeah.
We go by the state statute.
The other thing that...
Is that posted somewhere, Tim?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on our website.
The actual date when they can do that?
It's on our...
I think we just put out a press release, the thing that...
I figured you had.
The thing that makes it...
Tim sent something out today on Facebook.
Yeah, the thing that does make it a bit more complicated is the forty-five days applies to permits within right-of-way. If it's, or signs in right-of-way. If it's on private property, it's harder to regulate, I think. And that goes back to that whole state Supreme Court rule from several years ago, because the state didn't think it was right to regulate church pie bakes and rubbish sale signs and things like that. So I think if a sign's on private property, there's a bit more flexibility.
But if it creates a lot of sight problem, then they can yank it.
That's correct. If it creates a light-of-sight problem, or if it's in an island or something, it can be pulled.
Or if it exceeds also the size limit.
Or if it exceeds the size limit, but most of the political signs are breaking. But generally, forty-five days, yeah.
Is that, that's not the same as outside the city, though, is it? Is that, is that a state, or is that outside the city? Because on one side of the road, it's city, and on the other side of the road, it's county.
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have anything to do with that. The other thing that's maybe slightly noteworthy, we do require permits for those larger signs, like barn signs or whatever, we would require a permit for those. There's no cost for that. They're free, but I think we just want to be able to know where they are and track them.
Yep, thanks.
That it, Pete?
Yes.
All right, thanks. Dan?
Thank you, Tish, for sending out the Leavenworth County Port Authority memo. It should have come to all of, all of y'all. If you've got any questions, let me know. It appears that basor is pulling out of the Port Authority again, so they didn't say why. July 11th, at 11:30 at Hay Market Event Center, there's going to be somebody down there from the state discussing the kickoff of the McIntyre project. It's slated for 2032. So if you want to get some more information, go there, I think, Port Authority, if you tell them you're coming, they'll make sure you got a seat. Skip some of this. And I was confirmed today by the Board of County Commissioners, Leavenworth, on, I'm on their planning committee for the unincorporated areas, so that's only in the county area. And that's everything I've got, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Kerry?
I spoke to Tim today. I've given a lot of thought to the possibility, I didn't know if it'd be a good idea, what you guys think about this, but I threw it out to Tim, asked him. You know, we haven't got any building going on in the city, and we're pretty frustrated with that. I think everybody up here would say that. And I would like to force some, ask, get some conversation going somehow, not force it, that wasn't a good word, but, you know, invite builders, contractors in this area. You know, we've done some things to make, there's lot sizes, we've decreased the sizes, hoping that would help. There was some, Tim, you got to help me out there with the grant money, or that...
That RHID program, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, what do you guys think about bringing those people in? Are we overstepping by doing that? But, you know, I'd like to know, are you ever going to build in this area? What's your plan? What do you need from us?
The local builder...
Tim didn't hang up on me, so...
Yeah, we, we had a really good conversation. It's been frustrating. We've been pestering Mike Riley for seven years, and it's, it's like every month, it's a different excuse. So that's been really frustrating. But I mean, I know Josh and I have reached out to him a lot. We're happy to invite him to a council meeting, but maybe, maybe he would give you guys a different answer than he gives me and Josh. We, we have had good meetings with builders we're trying to bring into the market.
Right.
I'm not sure they would want to publicly come to a meeting, I guess, before a project gets kickstarted, but, you know, when we meet with those guys, if a couple of you wanted to come to those meetings, and I guess that's the challenging thing, when Josh and I have those meetings with folks, a lot of times, they're in the middle of the day, you know what I'm, so like, so folks who are working might not be able to go.
I would love to, and I don't even, I won't even anticipate, if I could just sit and listen.
And I can start inviting you guys, yeah.
Yeah, I would just like to hear what they say.
Yeah.
And, I mean, what's the worst thing that's going to happen?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to invite a couple of you guys if you want to sit in on some of those meetings, because we've had, we've had good meetings lately. People who are new to the market are attempting to purchase properties in Lansing to build houses on. One of the things that we seem to struggle with, whether it was when I first came here, even now, so many vacant properties in Lansing. People can value their property how they want, but a lot of people think their property is worth a lot of money. And I know one of the builders was telling us, you know, with, it's a prominent property in town, this guy is trying to acquire, and he said, at this number, I can't build reasonably afford, reasonably priced houses. He just straight up said that, like, so I mean, there's, there's discussions happening behind the scenes, but...
Mark Lineawaver was another one, you know, if we could...
Yeah, we haven't talked to him for two or three years. Mayor Matt and I met with him a few years ago, but we can follow back up with him to see, to see his level of interest.
I know, Lynch had expressed to me that he kind of liked, and he has, I mean, he's done, he did the block, he did Arvo Block, then he did one, I think, just north of Eisenhower off Seventh Street.
Yeah.
And, and when we were dealing with him, he's just kind of like looking at the neighborhood, put that away. Said, you know, if that ever becomes available, I'm interested.
Yeah.
But of course, it's got to become available first. And so, he had done a whole lot, but he's, he did Arvo Block, and then has done a couple more vacant lots, I guess. So, I know he stays real busy in Tonkinoxi, and I think he's building about everything going on down there, but he, he acted like he was interested at the time, so.
You know, if you guys remember too, like, we, there are builders that we tossed out to help them out with sewer with our Arpa funds. You know, it was, it was incredibly frustrating when we offered people free money, and they still wouldn't build.
Right.
But...
And we're ready to go. I mean, we've done everything, so...
But, you know, if you want to, I can start notifying you or anybody else who's free during the day, we'd be happy. I think that might show the builders that the council means business. Because, you know, this brings up another thing that just crossed my mind. You know, there was, there are times when people will ask Josh and I, what do you think the council would say about this rezoning? What do you think the council would say about this? And Josh and I can't really, you know what, like, you guys are an independent body, we can give our best opinions, but, you know, things like that, we can't say for sure. So maybe it would be a good thing if there were a couple of council members in those meetings.
Well, we've asked you... I'd like, I'd like to know, you know...
Yep.
What can we do to incentivize them?
Well, I'm retired, I can show up now.
I mean, we could just have like a housing committee, if you want to do that, just put a couple of council members on, and then when you guys have meetings with developers or builders, they attend.
Report back to you, what we're hearing.
That's what I'd report back to me, you know. I mean, anything I can, you know, help with, yeah. So I mean, just get with Tim if...
Yeah, I can, Kerry and I had a really good conversation today and talked about different areas and things like that, so.
I mean, if you're interested in being on that committee, talk to Tim, we'll...
I'm interested. And I'll end with the Fourth of July celebration, really nice work. And I was also one of those people that had, I had a deck and fence built, went in before yours, Marcus.
Oh, thank you, Kerry.
Anyway, yeah, they, the comment I got from people that did that was, Lansing's really got a good process, so, easy to do.
That it, Kerry?
That's it.
All right, thanks. Don?
Just one thing, I'd, I, since, what was it, yesterday, it was a federal holiday, don't we, don't we city recognize all our federal holidays and the officers and that, be closed and whatever, and a paid day for our employees and all that?
No, and I just...
Do we need to, I'd like to add that, if it's, we need to put it in the employee's handbook or something, I'd like us to start recognizing that, because we recognize all the other federal holidays, I'd like to recognize that also, the city recognize. But what do you have to do to make that happen?
I'll talk to Tim about it.
Okay. Good, that's all I got.
Bring something to the council. All right, thanks, Don. Kevin?
Tim, good luck with your noble deed, and best wishes to all parties involved in your future endeavor there. And Marcus, you've been involved with the youth, the adults, the activities, the events, and the governing of this city. I hope whoever follows in your footsteps has that same dedication that you have.
Here.
And he was hard to train, too.
Well, you should have had the sit-bank for the last seven years. I didn't know that.
And without a make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Call roll.
Mr. Kirby?
Please.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.